Good morning, everybody. It's my pleasure to welcome all of you for this special session on growth. And before we start, I would like to introduce Mr. Tiagarajan. We call him Mr. Tiag. So I would use this name if you're comfortable with Mr. Tiagarajan.
Yes.
Yeah. So, Mr. Tiagarajan is currently the Managing Director of Blue Shark Limited and of course, we have both have a relationship for, of course, for the last eight plus years, right from the time I think Mr. Tiagarajan took charge as Maharashtra's Chair till now. And just to give us some background, Mr. Tiagarajan is an Electrical and Electronic Engineer from Madurai University. He has also completed a Senior Executive Programme of London Business School. He has more than four decades of experience, having worked for blue chip companies like Larson and Tbro, DPL Systems Limited, Old Top and currently he works in Blue Shala. Mr. Tiagarajan has handled various assignments. I would not spend much time, but from a service area to marketing. I think he is currently the Managing Director of Blue Shark. And basically, he is very much specific areas of interest or manufacturing industry four point zero, marketing four point zero. So it's very rare to have a person combining marketing and manufacturing. Generally, the marketing guys are specialized. Tiagarajan will talk about fully. And most important thing is total cost management. He is also very passionate about environment, sustainability and of course, agriculture and food processing. Mr. Tiagarajan plays a very, very, very active role in various industry core. As I told you, I know him from the time he was the Chair of Maharashtra State. And later on, he took charge as a past Chairman of Western Region. Of course, currently he is the CI National Council. And he is also the Vice Chairman of Indian Green Building Council. In the past, he was also the President of Refrigeration and Air Conditioning Association. So it's my pleasure to welcome you, Mr. Tiagarajan. And before we start our conversation, I would like to just give a brief. This year, we had a team at Maharashtra. Basically, how do we accelerate growth of Maharashtra with focus on innovation, sustainability and technology? And we have had very good speakers on all the topics. For example, innovation, we had Dr. Nocharth Pope chatting his thought process. And we had on technology two good speakers. Last week, we had Dr. Ganesh Natarajan, Chairman of Honeywell. And before that, we had Nasdaq founder, Mr. Asang Desha speaking on it. We also had a good speaker on sustainability, Mr. Mukundan, Tata Chemicals MD. So there has been a lot of learnings for our members and I'm sure today we are going to focus on the topic growth. So this will be very good for our members because growth is something which all of us look at it, growth both in terms of financials and of course, not only financial, we also look at growth as individual and growth as a country and a nation. So, Mr. Tiagarajan, currently the talk in India is basically, let me start with the first question. We have to reach five trillion dollar economy. There are various dates, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty seven and so on. But my thought process is what should be India's goal? To become number two or number three economy in the world because this trillion dollars is related. And naturally, if India has to become number one, number two or number three, Maharashtra is the leading state. Today, Maharashtra contributes close to sixteen to eighteen percent of India's GDP. And for sure, if India becomes a five trillion economy, Maharashtra would be one trillion dollar economy. So what is your view and what do you think we should do to reach this goal? Over to you, Mr. Tiagarajan.
Uh, good morning, Sirdam. Good morning, all the participants. It's wonderful to interact with you after a very long time. Thank you for inviting me. I am only sharing my perspectives to the, limited to my own understanding of what is actually going on. Uh, the very first thing is that it's not if India is doing five trillion, Maharashtra will be one trillion. The Maharashtra will have to do at least one trillion for India to reach five. That's how I will look at it. Now, I also want to place a disclaimer in the sense that uh, some of the views that I describe are maybe contrary to the beliefs. Uh, some may be challenging our own thought process so far. And it is to be taken as a starting point for us to. I suppose the context is, yeah, exchange our views in a forum like this and thereby we will benefit. The second part is our own work plan for Maharashtra, Western Region, how these discussions will help. That's how I look at it. The very first thing that I want to place is whether India will grow. India will definitely grow. I believe it is India's decade of growth and we will shine as a country. And the arena is wide open. A number of things are working out in our favor. Uh, whether we should take for granted it is going to happen, I don't think so. We have to be doing quite a bit. Uh, you know, we are also a dramatic country in the sense that we mix seriousness with passion uh, with some dramas going around. Okay, and that's how our nature is, whether it is country, whether it is individuals, our own personal lives, that's how we are. We are we are not entirely serious people. We are not entirely light-hearted people having fun. Uh, we have a sense of purpose and we like a lot of drama slogans, all that stuff. Now, uh, it is colorful in that respect. It is good. I'm not saying we should stop it. Uh, but look at this whole thing of China plus one as something and we assumed we do not know where it originated. It is, it should have originated only from India. Now, you, you, you ask in UK somebody, you ask in Europe anyone. Is those supply chain managers are thinking in terms of China plus one? They are not. And whereas it has become a big drama of, we, 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 we are in a manner of speaking, assuming it is some UN resolved thing of China plus one is supposed to happen. It is dictated to the countries. And in the past one and a half years, we started believing China plus one is happening. In US, many supply chain managers are not even aware what is China plus one. If you ask whether they should like to de-risk their supply chains globally, yes, they want to de-risk their supply chain. But it is, it has not granted that China plus one means India and we are there. And even before it happened, we have made an assumption that we are there. So this is a drama part of it. Now, the, uh, so I'm saying as an example, how we can get carried away by something that is, that is, that is planted in our minds, grew over a period of time because that slogan is something that we can relate to and it propelled us to think that way. Okay. Now, having said that, that is also important. Okay, at least there is a beginning point. A US supply chain head or a European supply chain head is not thinking China plus one means India and India is India is to be considered there. Whether he thinks or not, we have understood there is an opportunity out there. To that extent, it is fine. Now, the, the whole story, we have to reflect on how the other countries had grown. So we may not like China today. The China's growth came from very systematic approach that they followed, whatever be the political system, we may have quarrels with that. They went ahead and committed to building China as a factory to the work. Now, important thing is that they felt that they should go ahead and make for China themselves. So are we doing it? Yes. So there is a Make in India program that we will go ahead and do and that is a fantastic beginning for us. And the question, why we have to import this? Can we not make it ourselves? So we know that it was, it was the Industrial Revolution. It is the Europe beginning to manufacture in large quantities, moving to United States, Japan and the Asian tigers and so on and so forth. We know that evolution. And China, the, after Taiwan, China came as an important destination and they went ahead and built it by, yeah, meeting China's own domestic demand and growing the domestic demand. China's market was large enough for them to become globally competitive. The second part is that you go ahead and build the ecosystem, manufacturing infrastructure, larger than life infrastructure. That is a second reason for them to succeed. Third is simultaneously, the rural population which are agreed based population, skilling them and to handle such complex manufacturing value chain. The next part is that finding out what is their unique value proposition and whether we like it or not. The China made it very competitive. The, the low-cost products were available from China. Whether it is true today or not, we do not know, but their growth came from differentiating themselves and doing it despite the fact that the China, whether quality is made in China, is not a great brand. Despite all that, they went ahead and created products that are superior quality at affordable prices. That is how they grew. These fundamentals are there for us to see. My view is India will have to follow the same model. I do not think that there is something else different India can do. Now, what is the disadvantage India has got? India's disadvantage is the scale itself. You do not have, whichever category you take it, you are miniscule compared with many other markets. So when you don't have scale and when you have got the ambition to become globally competitive, how will you do it? I know that I can talk about many industries, including food processing, but I'm taking air conditioning industry about which I know more. Now, take a residential air conditioner. The global market size is around hundred and twenty million units per annum. Now, China's domestic market today is estimated at around eighty-five million. India's market size is seven million. Now, China, a domestic plus what they export is close to around hundred million. Now, where are you going to compete with that country which is having such a huge head start and built an infrastructure to manufacture every, the, the price levers are with them. And they have the skills, they have learnt everything about this product, about every country where that it will operate. And you have got a component and raw material ecosystem that has developed because of this huge scale that they have built. Now, you're a seven million market and you are you're also dependent on whether this summer will happen, one summer growth will be there, another summer growth won't be there. And you are, you do not have a competent ecosystem at all. Okay. Now, what had happened between two thousand and two thousand twenty? Easy option for any companies, you outsource to China, put your label and sell. Okay, minor differentiation. So you comfortably not invested in manufacturing ecosystem at all. You didn't even invest in research and development because it was a cheapest product, high-quality product of any specification needed for energy efficiency or ozone depletion, any standard, China could develop and give it to you. So over the years, it is, it is, in fact, if you invest in manufacturing, you will be a fool. Because you, why will you incur that cost? Because you can't match that price only. There is no uh, business case for you to get into. That's how you are. Comes the pandemic, then Make in India, then the government says that why we should import that air conditioner is the sunrise sector identified. Why they identified, we don't know, but they identified, do not, because the total import to H K is not even ten thousand crore rupees. So therefore, why they will do it? They did it. It is good that they did it. And then comes how will you quickly go ahead and develop the products by investing in R and D? How will you create a competent ecosystem? And how will you go ahead and then ensure uh, the cost of that will be lower than what you had been selling? It looks formidable task, but you go ahead and say we need some kind of support. There is a PLI scheme that comes in and helping the companies to go ahead and at least invest in what is needed for creating a domestic component ecosystem. Now, the, still, whether it will be globally competitive, we do not know. Now, what is actually happening? The kickstart through this PLI scheme. In PLI scheme, there is a X axis, which is the investment threshold. So hundred crore, hundred and fifty crore, two hundred crore. Y axis is the incremental sales. So many people understand PLI is production linked. While the name is production link, incentive will be paid on incremental sales over a particular year. In air conditioner scale, this case it is FI twenty-one. Whatever was FI twenty-one sale of your company, incremental sale over FI twenty-two, FI twenty-three, FI twenty-four, so on and so forth. On that, you will be paid six percent or five percent or four percent or three percent in a declining order. Okay, the highest percentage is in the very first year. Okay. Now, therefore, I apply for a PLI. I meet the X axis, which is the investment threshold. My Y axis is not going to come because I produce.
Yeah.
I have to go ahead and sell. Okay. Now, what has happened? This six thousand and odd crore that is invested, people are there going ahead and commissioning the factory this year. By, by December two thousand twenty-three, India will have double the capacity of what it is. But for incentive to be earned by the companies, it has to be sold more. So on a twenty percent, if I increase my sale on that twenty percent, I will get six percent. That's all. Now, you can imagine what is going to happen because the market won't double. But the manufacturing capacity has doubled. All of us, what we will do, we will go ahead and dilute that PLI into the pricing, which means the PLI gets transferred to the pockets of the consumers. And in the process, the prices come down, market grows and you can imagine over a period of time you will have a scale for competing with the work. Now, what is a whole story about manufacturing across the world, in whatever manner that it has happened? It has happened through scale, number one. It has happened through technology and being smart. That is, you have figured out something which is unique and that particular product people will consume. The under smart manufacturing itself, how you can go ahead and start manufacturing. Those days, it was CNC machine was a revolution or then COBO robot, so on and so forth. Now you have the IOT in manufacturing for delivering consistent quality and globally competitively in terms of conversion cost. The third one is connected with the new dimension, which is whether the product is sustainable in nature. And all products are having some impact towards this because you don't have the raw materials that are available. So in a way, in some copper, some aluminium, so on and so forth in many areas. And this is how the manufacturing grew. So you are, you're building scale, you are being innovative and smart. You have invested in R and D, which, which Nocharth would have talked to you. And then you are conforming to the sustainability requirements that are if it is sustainable development, that is the other area that you have kept your workers, communities in order. That is how the manufacturing industry grew. Now, till three years ago, we were not believing India is going to be a manufacturing thing. Even within CI, we thought that when the manufacturing will grow and it's long away, our focus went into services sector. And if at all, we spent more time in agriculture form, even though we know it's a manufacturer's association, but the ecosystem was not developing. Now rightly, you have now this imperative that we have to grow in manufacturing. The government is committed. It's a positive thing. Two, everyone has understood, large-scale employment can happen only through manufacturing. The third is, even if it is agriculture, food processing, how food processing as a sector or agro-processing can help? Again, I would call it as a manufacturing one league. Then you are having some PLI schemes for identified sectors. In this, the government is very smart, whether it is by design or so. They, they thought they will incentivize the manufacturers, but nobody is believing me when I say this. People think that I'm being mad. I'm telling you, in air conditioning industry, six thousand odd crore given by the government will go to consumers eventually. That's all that is going to happen. It's not that you can keep that money and improve the profitability. Now, system is developing in this particular manner. Now you can come to the other areas that look whether you have the infrastructure in the country questionable. It is, it is not really, it is breaking. You can see this growth, what is happening through the manufacturing investments that are taking place across. Uh, so we have the IETF, the, the number of stalls that are being sold there and the interest that is being shown. Now, next thing is the, the free trade agreements that are being signed in order to go ahead and provide the export growth, which is under stress now, that is going, that is another area. Now, sentiments of Indians are still very high. A great deal of optimism that we are, we have arrived and nobody is talking about inflation uh, while Europe, US are all crying. Here we are not. That specifically the rural markets, if you travel, there is great deal of optimism despite their own pains. They, they have stress in several things, but still the people are happy that it is going to happen. I have never seen fulfillment and happiness of this order, even though the burden and goner. The, the, the divide between the rich and poor itself is very high. We still have very high level of poverty. But God's grace, there is great deal of optimism that is going on.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Wonderful.
In this context, you are seeing a huge growth that is happening, but infrastructure is already breaking down. You are seeing airports full, hotels not available, roads jams, all these are. I am of the view that India will navigate this also through.
True.
What you have to, I will come later on, but what probably we should do as a country and specifically in Maharashtra. I have some thoughts. I will come back on that.
So thank you so much, sir. And I just only have one different viewpoint. I think you spoke about India plus one, China plus one means it's India. Uh, but to be very frank with you, because I work for a enderse also, which is Swiss German multinational. Uh, the kind of trust level people have on India, I think if you look at it, it's quite high. I think you're absolutely right. People will go to an area where we are competitive. But India is being looked at as a serious candidate. I'm not saying it will replace China. Uh, but only one thought process I have is China also underwent this journey. I think I have seen how China was when I traveled in the year nineteen ninety. I think, I think that time, the growth levels they were, I think, China, because the government system, they can easily bulldoze if they want, slumps. Uh, here we are talking about Daravi redevelopment. We are a democratic country. So that is one challenge we have. And that's where I think we are slightly different from China. But that brings in a lot of trust because people believe, uh, this is a democratic country. So there is a lot of belief.
So I, you know, on, on this, I'll make three observations. Number one is that the, I've analyzed this, where from that trust factor comes, okay? Uh, you know, there are many MNCs like you and there will be an audience, American MNCs. The, the question is that there is, nobody is going to have some extra love for India based on emotion. The Western world doesn't have any emotions to share with you at all. It is a question of survival of the fittest. What is suiting me? That's all they are going to do and that's what we should be also fulfilling.
True.
Now, the trust comes from there. It comes from basically whether you are a ethical businessman. And so therefore, uh, in terms of ethical standards, we will score high. And I think we should do much more, specifically with regard to the quality, with regard to the governance and those financial ethics, so on and so forth. See, when, when you're in the international arena, the corporate frauds, these kind of things will have to be, we will carry a very high weight. This is first part of it. Second part is connected with the complete digital electronics and the data security. If they are avoiding China, the foremost reason is that they will not be interested in getting into anything which is with the embedded software at all. So any industry where you are delivering electronics, they, India will be clearly a preferred country compared with China or Russia or any other places. So this is the second differentiator. The third is that we need to invest in made in India brand, which is the government job. I don't think we should expect anything else from government other than building a made in India brand. But where I have a quarrel, I think we are trying to attempt exports on every goddamn thing, which is not required at all. We, we should stand for, there are some seven, eight categories where we are going to be shining. You know, it may be food, it may be connected with electronics, it may be connected with toys or whatever it is. Shoes leather was identified, textile is something which we have to bounce back and come in. So identify that even ten sectors will do, but now believing that everything is going to happen, it is not going to happen. Perhaps in auto competence, we have a huge opportunity globally.
True.
So these are my responses to your questions.
Thank you, sir. I think this indirectly we jumped to the next question. Uh, basically you shared this previously, your experience in your sector. Now, we have a vision, India on hundred. I think there is a vision. And we want to, I think there is a saying, if we have to generate employment opportunity, India should do this eight percent or close to ten percent growth. In order to give, because we are a country which is like China, we have population, we are aspiring youth. What do you think? Or if you, you covered this, but just to reemphasize, what are the few pick pictures? Of course, you talked about infra and other topics. What are the few pick low-hanging fruits, which we should do immediately as a country? So that we can have this growth sustainable for the next ten years, at least to be really make it as India's decade, next decade.
So the very first thing I think is the R and D investments.
Okay.
And which is, Nocharth would have told you, there is a close correlation to the R and D expenses as a percentage of GDP and the GDP growth. Now, all countries that grew, uh, the, when China was growing, their R and D investment went up. Korea was growing, R and D investment went up. Japan was growing, R and D investment went up. With this point sixty-five percent stagnated investment in R and D, that too by government, it is not. Uh, so the, we have, I, I think, you know, I won't exaggerate if I had to say that greatest innovation, engineering minds are in India.
True.
So we should go ahead and create that innovation R and D ecosystem, which was a neglected subject till now. So therefore, this is one thing that we are supposed to be doing. The second one is that the, the, the making you know, I will go back to Prahlad, who was the mentor for CI. So what was his doctrine? His doctrine was clear. The companies, nations, whichever manner you take it, those who succeed will be innovation-driven and sustainability-oriented. These two will divide. This was one of his important teachings to CI, which is coming true. Okay. The second part is of his theory, all over the world, is how do you look at your demographics? So what is our, you mentioned about our population. It may be hundred and thirty crore, but many are below the poverty line and they cannot afford to buy. So you are talking about a domestic growth unless and until we bring them to mainstream. Uh, how are they going to become potential consumers? See, at some point of a time, population is also a competitive lever. See, population could be seen as a problem and a burden. Population should be seen as a responsibility. Population should be seen as a competitive advantage that we have in order to leverage as consumers. The real issue is that the rural development and connecting them to the value chain is very important. Okay, I, I'll tell you a simple point, what we, what we should do. This growth in India is not going to happen. It won't be due, if it is not happening, it will not be due to money. Capital is available in the world. India will face problem eventually in terms of availability of people. Take my industry, manufacturing capacity is doubling. Therefore, sales have to double. Take my industry, manufacturing capacity is doubling, therefore sales have to double. If we have to earn the P L I, where are those people, where are where are those man by, because we never focused on manufacturing. Suddenly so many manufacturing units are coming up. Look at anything, infra you take it, so many airports, so many metro railway, where from this talent will come? It is going to come from rural population reskilled because cities do not have that population. I may today manage by coaching somebody from some other company, it will last for only some time. And afterwards, I am I'm going to struggle for this manpower. Now, rural education, connecting them to the value chain is very important. I I I one of the important points we are discussing with our within C I is this. You are seeing newspaper, three crore salary I am picked up, I at Bombay this salary and the X L R A this salary. And we are reading that, it's a great thing that is happening, that's the news in the media. So many rural colleges, they are not figuring in our campus recruitment list, including Blue Star. Because we we think we should pick up top ten colleges, top twenty colleges, top thirty colleges. So these are people who aspire to be part of the value chain, perhaps they have pledged their mothers. You know, there are cases where mother's own Mangal Sutra has been pledged or something has been sold. In order to do that engineering or vocational codes or polytechnic or whatever it is, we are not even looking at them, forget recruiting them. The we are we are now trying to attempt that whether at least ten percent of our recruitment can be from this rural institutions. On one hand, we are we are going to have a huge shortage. So there is, unless and until we convert this rural population and make all the hundred and thirty. As your customers, it is of no use, it will not happen, otherwise your domestic market will stagnate. The next is India is a market which is price sensitive, it is looking for affordable products. Whichever is the category, that's why some Indigo will do well, that's why Maruti Susiki will do well. And it is very, the companies which have understood that I have to create affordable products always succeed. So therefore, how we will use our R and D innovation to go ahead and develop products which are meant for Indian consumers?
Right.
Then creating a pride of like, you know, Pawan has talked to us in this forum, I think, or some other forums that repeatedly. That a Japanese guy will not buy any product which is not made in Japan, same is the case with Korea. The question is that how we will take pride in making them by Indian product, which means it should be of highest quality. You cannot produce some substandard and ask them to buy, I think it is happening, the companies are making it happen. My final point is, I don't think we should expect government to do this. I I will come to also what Maharashtra should do, but I think we should be making it happening ourselves. Uh government can only be an enabler in this.
I I think absolutely right, I just want to add one more point to this. Uh of course, rural youth need to be included. Apart from that, I feel India also needs to do more in terms of diversity, we need to have the female population. I think fifty percent of our India's population is females and we should also make use of them. I think because of the cultural system we have, I think generally the females, they take a break and we need to encourage them also to come back. I think this is something which is skills are available, but because of the nature.
I mean, I'm telling you, thirty years ago, Prahlad in in a C I even only had talked about it in the sense. That you have to view them as potential consumers, what I will do them to convert into that.
Yep, yep.
And so the corporate world will benefit immensely by doing something in order to, which which can begin from. Don't do it free.
Yep.
Get them into employment stream.
Absolutely right, and I we I'm into the last two questions, we have some questions, fifteen last fifteen minutes from the audience. Now, you covered this indirectly, but we are going to go at a very, very rapid pace the next ten years. And generally, all of us know when we, India specifically, I'm not saying all companies do it. But generally, we tend to ignore certain few basic things and we should understand in manufacturing. Uh we have our small and medium scale sectors, S M Es, who have their own challenges. So what are the precautions we need to take to ensure the job generation of growth is consistent? And you also spoke about it, the income, I think three crores from I A T guy, I think, okay, it's fine, he can earn that. And it is good, but the bottom of the pyramid, I think they also need to earn a. I would say, living wage, which is fair for them to take care of their family. So what do we think we should, precautions we should take, because this is exactly the challenge today, though it's not coming in the papers, China is also facing. We have some people who are earning very, very high and the government, that's what the government is trying to do. I will not get into the topic because it's slightly political, but what we we, of course, people need to be paid wages based on their skill set. And what they can bring, but how do we ensure this equitable income growth, because this is a topic, if you can answer this quickly, sir.
Unfortunately, Sehram, I I don't think I am qualified or knowledgeable to address this subject to be largely. You know, the only good thing is that if you look at the B twenty secretariat. It it is talking about sustainability, it is talking about equitable development and sustainable development. So therefore, it is good, so that that I can confidently say that if it is listed there, it is. It has received the attention of the biggest of the big, because that rise line will not come in without somebody. Uh approving it, it it will be definitely even the Prime Minister of India, so at least it has got the attention.
Okay.
The second part is that it has to begin somewhere, it it begins with the growth. If there is growth, for that growth, the investments have to take place and. You have now the window to that huge pipeline of investments that are happening across the country in various sectors. Uh whether it is enabled by P L I or not by P L I and there are some public sector projects, so there is a growth that is happening. Growth brings employment, there is no doubt about it. And the, within the political constraints, there is a new labor code, wage code, et cetera, have been announced. And all sudden then, I I hold a view in certain matters, unless and until there is regulation, it is not going to happen in the country. So this is what it is. Now, what are we talking about, whether there will be a visibility towards the regulatory tariffs? Uh so you, yeah, yeah, investment takes place in great confidence. If people know this is going to be the regime, tax regime that is moving forward. The frequent changes will not be helping them and I think the government is willing to provide that, that's that's the indication that we get. And therefore, uh this will be a period similar to that of two thousand to two thousand seventy eight. And that accelerated growth and I think it is not possible without including the rural population. It will happen through that and in the process, I think the income levels will go up. But having said that, the divide between rich and the poor have have nots. Is true of even United States of America. So it is, and there are countries who are managing by, you know, rolling out freebies. And I I I don't think that is the right way to do it because you need productive employment for the people. Uh so I am not an expert on the subject, but equally I believe it is receiving due attention because I saw it only week before last. B twenty tagline specifically calling out equitable as an agenda. Which means it is looked at very closely and fortunately for us, fortunately for us. The political parties have understood that the rural vote bank is important.
Yep.
And there is a visible difference, like like, you know, the that they have to be brought into mainstream. Economic growth is very well understood by the political parties as well.
Thank, sir, thank you sir, I think you said you are honest, but but you covered the right topics which have to be talked through. And my, I think there is some initiative which is supported by senior members of C I, it's called the social compact. Where that's where we not only look generally as a good big companies and ethical companies, they manage their minimum wages and other things. But as you go down the vendor value chain, I think that's where you find surprises, people, it's not that not paying wages. What people should be first, have the knowledge what they are eligible for. So this brings me to the next question, I think you said you 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 said what Maharashtra should do, I think that's the first thing, what we should do. And what we as C I, you covered it indirectly, but what we as C I should do to facilitate this growth? And what is it that we as individuals, I think we have today, I think people from students, I think M S M Es. I think industrialists, it's a mix of audience, what are the things we should do to contribute towards our country's growth, which is sustainable?
Which is. They they say, and I'm connected with Maharashtra, the very first thing, I I I I think for the type of investments. It has appreciated despite being a high cost location, in terms of power source and so forth. Uh Maharashtra's infrastructure is pathetic, you you know how many years you will fight for your own Aurangabad flight situation?
Yep.
Uh or Colapur for example, it it is very frustrating. You don't have hotels in quite a few industrial clusters. And you you were in Pune last week, you saw how the infrastructure is breaking down there. I I don't know how when this growth happens or will happen, it is impossible. So Maharashtra's important thing is how they will go ahead and focus on building world class infrastructure. I I'm not saying they are not doing, they are they are doing quite a bit in Mumbai, quite a bit, this Mumbai, Nasik highway and all are happening. But with great speed you have to do because the world is not going to wait, so this is the important thing Maharashtra should do. The second one is connected with the, what Maharashtra stands for. It has to pick up some sectors and say I am number one in the country. You know, whether it is auto competence, electronics, you know, we missed out completely.
Yep.
We we missed out to Haryana Enseer for no reason. Actually, the engineering talent is available here. Now, it involved quite a bit at that point of time, that you need some testing facilities, you need yeah. Anchor industries to be brought in here so that it grows on and so forth. So Maharashtra has to identify some three, four sectors. The next is that if you look, being an agriculture, horticulture country with a lot of water available. Maharashtra has not done enough for food processing at all. The 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 world class food processing infrastructure can be in Maharashtra. It is it is it is failing to identify which are those sectors which it can go ahead and do. Now, it is this next point I am willing to make is not connected with Maharashtra alone, connected with all states, okay? I do not see a great deal of coordination, collaboration with the D P I I T. Say for example, when P L I schemes were developing, states can very well be tuned there. And get, you know, ahead of the curve to be saying that, look, this P L A is coming, I am the fellow who can provide that. The entire air conditioning industry, it its investment is in C city. Out of the P L I scheme, seventy percent of that P L I or sixty percent of the P L I is going to C city. So the the in Maharashtra, there are enough places where it could have come in. So the the question is, it is not cooperating or collaborating with the D P I T on a regular basis. To be co-creating this particular policy of how I can go ahead and attract the investment. Now, I think C I work plan should include getting this particular part right. In the sense that, look, there is a P L I that is happening, this is the National Manufacturing Council's agenda, these are happening. Therefore, how we will go ahead and get this and help the Maharashtra government deny, I am going to be the number one destination for this. Otherwise, you will keep fighting with Gujarat or Tamil Nadu like this, depending on the season. Okay, and we failed, I failed in getting Maharashtra to align on the agri processing, food processing. It it is something which this state produces a lot and some private sector entrepreneurs are doing enough. But it is not good enough to take it to a global scale. Okay, now, there is a well-oiled machinery of industrials. Correct, that there there is many businesses are located here and many people feel that doing business here makes sense. There is whichever is the political party, there is stability, it is not a new government comes and overturns the earlier one, that doesn't happen in the state. So these are all very positive things and you have got enough mentors to be going ahead and helping the other industries. And it is a gateway to the world in number of other respects. So how do we go ahead and get these sectors defined? In this I am world class, nobody can beat me. And for that, like a made in India brand to be done globally, made in Maharashtra, how it will be? So one request which I had placed when I was the chair itself, that look, Maharashtra has to do its own road show across the world. And C I was willing to come forward, they will not listen to us at all. So the the question is that here, United States, state after state is coming and doing their selling. And C I knows this job well, how to conduct a road show showcasing what we are doing. And it doesn't cost money in Maharashtra scheme of things. So how we can persuade them that let us do road show as a systematic exercise of. This is the cluster where you can come and set up.
But thank you.
Last point is. My, I may be wrong, I must be forgiven if I am saying this, Maharashtra, the government thinks. Seven hundred crore, thousand crore is the investment, it is not a thirty crore, fifty crore, hundred crore. I think eventually in India, these small investments are important. So therefore, how you will recognize these investments also as investments? See, forget the press, press won't write about fellow investing ten crore into something or twenty crore into something. It is all investments, right, eventually? And Maharashtra doesn't respect according to me a hundred crore, it is nothing for them, big ticket items they are looking for. I think it is a very wrong thing to do.
Absolutely, sir, I agree with you and incidentally, last week on Friday, we had our state council meeting. Uh debating on how do we attract investments and create jobs, in fact, one of the things. I think our thought process is same, one of the thing I was saying to, as as part of my listening is. Maharashtra, you talked about road shows across world, my my view, there is nothing wrong going and doing road shows, even other states. I remember when I was in Maharashtra Zone Chair, I went for Auriq Road Show, to Tamil Nadu, Ahmedabad and all. I think we should come out of this feeling of we are the big guys, I think that's it. And you also made a very, very valid point, the small investments generally they generate in terms of employment more, the M S N Es generate more employment.
True.
Uh compared to, I think, somebody putting up L C D, I don't want to say they don't generate employment, that is also important. But compared to us, the our, in fact, even Enders knows that, compared to employment we give, our suppliers, indirect employment is quite high. So we should focus on that, that's absolutely right. Now, we have, since since there are some questions, I'll start off with some questions which are asked by people. Uh I will first go through the first one, this is from Mister Sunil Kanna, Mister Tiagarajan, you mentioned about export focus on electronics. The challenges of electronic manufacturing is that chips and components are not manufactured in India. And that will be a hindrance in value addition and it's being competitive, setting up a chip manufacturing is far away as of now, what's your view on this?
Yeah, to begin with, I think we should depend on the, I do understand that you have to go ahead and import the chips. But the the R and D itself, like Sunil is I A T and I know that my own learning. On this particular subject is also from I A T madras. Where I understood that we we cannot design a particular product with a particular chip and start depending on that. The question is what kind of chips will be available and what is going to be produced in large number and go ahead and develop keeping that ecosystem in mind. So which was which was taught to me by the doctor, Professor Ashok Junjwal and Professor Bhaskar Ramothi. That we had done that mistake, when we developed a drive, we had worked with the chip manufacturer and gone ahead and developed the drive. Then in order to go ahead and source it or go ahead and reduce the cost, you are stuck with that.
That is true.
You should have a deeper knowledge about the chips ecosystem available across the world and how. and how with what kind of components I should be working. And that's why I said that the R and D itself will be very important. Now, we also understood to our, you know, a great surprise that whichever electronic drives we were buying from abroad and forget China, it may be a political pricing, it is some fifty, sixty percent more than what one can manufacture in India. The uh I ironically, the software for that will be developed in India.
India, true.
And so therefore, the I do understand, but I but the question is with the P L I that is coming in for the semiconductors. We will have uh in 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 sometime in future that ecosystem as well. Most importantly, the I am uh this is another thing that which I told Rajesh also, Roshan can make note of it. Southern region that conducts one event as under the C I flagship, it is called Mystic South. This particular event is a two-day, three-day event. All people who were from South India have settled down in the U S or Euro. And this event is dedicated to them. In order to connect the business, in order to provide them the in order to provide the Indian entrepreneur an opportunity to connect with them and what can be done in research and development. So therefore, this Mystic West kind of a format where we get the Western India citizens who have settled down in the U S or specifically Silicon Valley has got plenty of them. They all want to do something. They want to give the connect. They want to import the knowledge. And I learned from the Mystic South, the chip related, what can be created? They, United States believe India could be a hardware manufacturer in electronics very easily if they get few acts together. And I think apart from chips, our problem is the testing laboratories. We we don't do not have that in India that also has to be created. By the way, uh when the the with the Estwell government, we had had this particular thing, how to create a document, one task was also worked on in electronic manufacturing, how to place Maharashtra number one.
I think I've seen the document. There are some three, four questions. So quickly, I will go through that. One is few questions are kind of comment. This is from Mister Sunil Desai, addressed to both of us. I agree that we are not embarked on developing an ecosystem for utilization of resources. For example, I think you spoke about outsourcing. He's speaking about Mister Vinod Agarwal, my good friend, past there of Gujarat. Instead of doing a capital investment, he found it easier to source, outsource the manufacturing, which was underutilized, but a strong example of handholding. There is nothing wrong. We need a highly proactive approach like that of Europe. Uh for example, recently Spain has ordered to Alstom and Chadler for ninety-seven trains out of some value of one billion euros. So our manufacturing unit, he says, needs to be proactive and secure each of the contracts and with the COB method to apply to one urban spokes model he's talking about. So he's saying our optimism, we need to make it as proactive. And I think he is right uh in terms of saying this. There is no question that this is a comment. It's very valid in my view. I think you also agree to this.
I I fully agree with you. The the que- the question is uh when there is uh there is growth of this nature happening, uh the tendency is to take for granted that it will happen in any case.
Hmm.
Uh that's what happens due to that. So we 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 must balance that out to be proactively doing a few things. And I also know this fact that the uh man traditional manufacturing leaders uh do not outsource unless and until it becomes a compulsion.
True.
Their preference is to do it in-house. That that's how it is. But the the coal growth and the time not being available should open up that.
True. Sir, there are four questions. So they are more or less related. So I'll quickly go through it since we are left with four, five minutes only. Uh this is basically with respect to air conditioning business. You you said that it will grow because India will reach one uh reach a trillion-dollar economy of India. But then you will also be adding foot carbon footprints. So he wants you to comment on this. So this you can comment. And another question is, basically, this is related to C I as a B twenty secretary for G twenty. Do you think C I should proactively start early practice uh with the industry stakeholders for M O U with global alliance? That means we need to in with respect to R and D, which can get the fund. So he's asking, do you think it's a good idea? We can start some homework before the meeting starts. That's the second question. And of course, the next two questions are also relevant, but I will just read it out. One is, this you of course covered in there during your thing, but this again, this is from Mister Pankas, the previous one was from Mister Vishala. What is the expected role uh the government and private should play to meet the twenty seventeen net zero target? And while having the country, I think we spoke about having a balanced sustainability and growth. And then what is last one is of course, what is your view on promoting totally indigenous hydrogen technology, green hydrogen technologies? This is from Mister uh Damaraju Parvati Lu. So I can read it out.
Quickly, we can answer this. The the number one is the uh you know, in automobile with the advent of E Vs. Uh it is understood that the world has overcome that particular challenge. So therefore, in automobile, you won't be going on hearing this particular one. The future mobility secures that sustainability imperative. But in air conditioners, it is that all the climate change related thing as well as energy efficiency. See, air conditioners uh consume a lot of energy. Therefore, there is a energy efficiency issue. It has refrigerants. Therefore, you have got the issue of either ozone depletion or uh global warming potential. The next one is connected with the e-waste, the air conditioning itself can generate. The last is that uh you know, the uh the global warming is largely related to also the food wasteage. The because it produces methane. So how the refrigeration can play a role without it it itself being an energy gasler or global warming uh gadget? So therefore, uh this is under serious regulations across the world. So if you bought an air conditioner in the year two thousand, if you are buying today, it consumes only twenty percent of the electricity it consumed in two thousand. So energy consumption has been brought down very substantially. The ozone depletion is addressed through the Montreal Protocol and global warming potential, Kigali and Paris provides for till in India's case, it is still two thousand forty. Uh so that migration will take place. Now, there is a breakthrough technology of any other kind without using the conventional refrigeration cycle. Lot of research is going on, but it is nowhere in the sight. In the coal chain technologies, we should not be adopting a Western technology because their conditions are completely different. There we should be consuming locally, producing locally and climate resilient agriculture, how we can. By the way, agriculture is a huge energy gasler and in terms of electricity as well as water. Uh it's not that it is a green. Agriculture means we take it green. Agriculture also is a burden on sustainability. And the food wasteage itself can cause quite a bit of global warming. So this is that part of it. Now, I will not look at G twenty as a business facilitator at all. It's a policymaking body. And we should continue to engage with the D P I I T. Uh so we we had had in many sessions, we are having an interaction with D P I I T. And the free trade agreements are enabled by D P I I T. And I am of the view that, look, the windows will open through these events and we should do more of that. That you know, whether the region or Maharashtra inviting an interactive session with the D P I I T. But so far, if you look at it, we have been only doing that for ease of doing business.
True.
And to position ourselves and how I can export, we should. And we should also be enabling that in the food processing itself. Like there are quite a few people in Maharashtra exporting even pomegranate uh to Euro. So how we will go ahead and open up these dialogues, interact the session with Apada for example, uh with the Ministry of Food Processing and we should, okay? And Maharashtra should also look at uh the if there is a Hanover fair, whether there should be a delegation that is going because of the export opportunities come through these events. I my feeling is, I I wish I am wrong, but in G twenty, B twenty, we will be lost. Because it is a big thing, big boys are involved there. And they will not have uh time and energy to connect you with somebody for growing your business or getting you some access. It's not going to happen is my view. The last question is, what what are you talking about?
This is about uh uh twenty seventy carbon neutral target, what we should do and
Very, I the 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 question is that my advice would be uh yes, C I has got two entities. One is the uh the Green Business Centre uh in Hyderabad and the I T C Centre of Sustainability.
Sustainability.
So the Green Business Centre has done extensive work on this uh green buildings as well as net zero. Okay, on the green built environment, including green coal. Now, anyone of the members want a I G D C team to be uh giving you an overview, I G B C will be more than happy to do that. There is absolutely no problem. I can enable that. Now, if you ask the government goal, government will definitely achieve that goal. Second, I think India is the country which is following the milestone. Including Europe and U S do not pay any uh heed to any of the agreements they have made and we should feel proud about that. Three, India's own um top priority item will be coal-based power to renewable. That is fast happening. And so that is one of the huge footprints. You can anticipate automobile-related regulations getting tightened and some items like air conditioners you pointed out, it will become increasingly tough. Now, the companies will be expected to announce their net zero mission when they will do. And our own understanding is scope one, scope two, it is easy to do. It is within your premises how we can do. Now, whether it makes a business case, you should look at it. Don't do not embark on it because you are to create a publicity of net zero. Whether it is really helping you, for for example, I am telling you, in Blue Star's case, a particular office may consume per square feet higher air conditioning costs compared with some other office. So why not Blue Star ensure whatever is the lowest per square feet that is available, all offices should adopt? See, by the way, net zero is not, uh you will consume zero energy. Uh you are going to be offsetting through something. The first step is how you will come bring down the energy consumption. And the there are uh so C I uh Green Business Centre or I G D C can help you with the overview of what probably you can do within. The machine uptime, machine power consumption times and where all you are having uh imbalances within your organization, uh you should be doing it. But the government will come out with the regulations from, I think, two thousand twenty-seven onwards. There is, there are going to be several regulations that are going to come in. So we should be prepared for that.
But thank you, sir. You spoke so nicely. So they have given you, I I know you are not a doctor, so he's saying thanks, Doctor Tiagarajan. So you are a doctor after a conversation.
Who who is that? Sunil is there?
No, no, it is Mister Damraju Parvati Lu. He has said, thanks, Doctor Tiagarajan. What is your opinion? That's the last question. What's your opinion on promoting totally indigenous green hydrogen technologies?
Yeah, I uh you know, uh I my knowledge on that subject is limited, but I I had chaired a couple of sessions for again C I. Uh I think it is going to happen through Reliance. And they are very well advanced in that. And the country we should keep in mind is Belgium. And Roshini, it was an event which was lodged. There there is a green hydrogen conclave. It was a Western Region event. Uh and I think you should redo that. And Mister Meswani of Reliance participates in that. Belgium Consul General participates in that. And the D P I I T participated in that. So therefore, uh I think it is a reality. It will be by Reliance. That's what I believe because they are progressing very fast in that.
So thank you so much, sir. In fact, we had planned a green conclave tomorrow that has got postponed. Uh because one of our chief guests from the government wanted to be there. Uh so we have postponed it to
So the uh I I I you know, you should do the hydrogen as a separate event. There are a lot of people who are there.
Okay.
Interested in that. The list of participants will be available in Western Region records.
So thank you so much, sir, for your input. It was wonderful. Wonderful. And as usual, we we spilled over in time, but I think it's not a
Yeah, anywhere I am, it will
No, no, no. It's only a five minutes still over, but it's not because of you. It's because of the kind of questions we had. So thank you, Mister Tiaga- Doctor Tiagarajan. Doctor Tiar, we will call you now. Uh after this wonderful, I think, learning I had, and sure, we have close to three hundred plus participants who are attending this on YouTube as well as on Zoom. So thank you so much and I think we have we have given us a lot of hope for Maharashtra. Because growth is something which is very important and you brought in an overall perspective. Thank you so much and have a wonderful day. Thanks to all the members for attending this on a Monday morning. So it goes straight into our head when we speak on a Monday. We 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 don't have anything we can speak. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. All the best.
Thank you. Thank you.
Everyone. Thank.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Thank you, sir.